Order the, uh, closed session meeting of the Ucaipa City Council of August the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And, uh... Do we have any public comment? Roll call. Got it. Roll call.
Councilmember Garner.
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe.
Here.
Councilmember Venable.
Here.
Mayor Protem Duncan.
Here.
Absent from tonight's meeting is Mayor Beaver.
Okay, do we have any public comment tonight?
We have no comments.
No public comments, so at this time then I'll go ahead and close us to, uh, adjourn us to a closed session.
Cousin had a hold on.
To go ahead and call the open session of the Ucapa City Council of August the fourteenth. We have our pledge of allegiance.
Ready to begin?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Captain Walker, we appreciate your helping us out with that. And Anna, can we have a roll call please?
Councilmember Garner.
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe.
Here.
Councilmember Venable.
Here.
Mayor Protem Duncan.
Here.
Absent from tonight's meeting is Mayor Bieber.
Mayor Bieber is not here tonight because he's on the SWAT team for the city of Azusa and he got called out this afternoon and so that's why he's not here tonight. And so we'll certainly miss him. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
No changes, sir.
Okay, so now at this time we need to report out of closed session. Mr. Graham?
Thank you Mayor. Direction was given on item A by consensus, nothing to report on item B.
Thank you. And tonight we have a couple of special presentations. First is YAPs Dog of the Month.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Protem. So this is a new segment we're introducing, we'll do this once a month at the council meetings. It's the YAPs Dog of the Month. This is an idea that came from actually Scott Ward who is Communications Director for our county supervisor, Don Rao. Scott also serves on the Board of YAPs. So he reached out with this idea and we think it's fantastic. So to lead off our first one of these tonight, we have Krista Dunlop, the Executive Director for YAPs. Krista? She's coming.
Do I need to go find the pooch?
We'll go front and center. Hello everyone. Hi, my name's Krista Dunlop. I'm the Executive Director at YAPs. This is my chicken in the adoptable Taro. He's a little over sensed right now. Taro is a rescue from San Bernardino City Shelter. He was rescued as a puppy and his whole family unfortunately became unhoused resulting in him needing a safe place to go. So YAPs took him in and we've had him for the last six, seven months, almost seven months now. He was incredibly shy when he first came to us and he's actually come out of his shell quite a bit. He used to not walk on leash very well. So considering he's in a room full of people, he's doing okay. He's very sweet. He does get along with kids and other dogs though he can have a little bit of a bossy side. But he is housebroken, he doesn't destroy things, and he does ride very well in the car. He's a little unsure of what he's supposed to be doing here, but he's a very sweet boy. And YAPs, if you guys, any of you are unfamiliar, we're Ucapa Animal Placement Society. We're right down the road here behind the high school. We're a no-kill nonprofit dog and cat rescue. We take in about five to six hundred dogs and cats every year from the community in high kill shelters and we find homes for these guys. In the last two years alone, we've done over twelve hundred animals that we've found safe places for. And City Council was kind enough to let us start coming once a month, so we'll be bringing dogs. Hopefully this is Taro's opening eye so he gets a good shot at a new home and you guys will be seeing more of me. Thank you guys.
Are we gonna... Are we gonna have our picture taken with YAPs to put in the paper?
I'll love it. Who wants to take a picture with us? You're good. Come on, lovey. And he sits like a mere cat. And he does tricks, looks just like mere cat.
Okay, our next presentation is by Chief Malinowski, the Wildwood Fire Safe Council.
Good evening Mayor Protem and Council. So I'm gonna bring down Doug Williams and any of the other Fire Safe Council members. So you've seen these folks before when we introduced them for a Firewise Community, so with that NFPA designation for Firewise. So they've taken the next step and become a Fire Safe Council. So what that is, is they are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. They have a Fire Safe Council that reports to the Inland Empire Fire Safe Council and all the way up to kind of the Nationwide Fire Safe Councils. And now they can apply for grants on that 501(c)(3) which they already have successfully applied for, grant through Edison, and then they're getting funding through IERCD. And they're the citizen side that's matching the same things we're doing for hazard fuel mitigation and resource management projects in the Wildwood Canyon Corridor. So it's a slow process, but we're working right now to reduce hazard fuels in Wildwood Canyon State Park, which State Parks doesn't particularly like to reduce the fuels in their area. So it's a decent amount of work, but that work is happening now to actually see it on the ground here hopefully next spring. So with that, I have Doug here. They put together a couple minute video they'd like to play and then I'm gonna let Doug speak for their Fire Safe Council.
It wasn't always like this. Before humans arrived, eleven thousand years ago, the only source of ignition was dry lightning, which isn't common in California. So fires were rare. And because they were rare, they went nuclear. You see, fire debt is the primary driver of fire intensity. And the reason is simple, more fuel, bigger bomb. More carbon grows out of the ground every single year. So every year that you're not burning some of it off, your fire debt increases. In the prehistoric mega-fire era, the mean fire interval in California was around a hundred years, meaning in any given area, there would only be a fire once in a century. That's a hundred years of fuel loading in between fires. It doesn't mean that it didn't burn every year in California. It did. Zerick regions like the Santa Clarita Valley burned a lot more frequently, every few years, while Big Basin Redwoods burned every three centuries. But the average statewide was a hundred. When the Indians arrived, a lot of them probably died in one of these nuclear fires and they realized, we'd better burn it first. And they did, a lot. The natives in the Western Sierra ritualistically burned out the Yosemite Valley every year. And while they inherited a dense forest with a volatile fire landscape, with ten thousand years of Indian burning, they reduced the average fire debt from over a hundred years in the pre-human era, down to less than five years. There is never more than five years' worth of fuel in any inhabited area. And thus, they made the giant devastating fires of the past extinct. Then we came along. We saw that by introducing more fire to the landscape, the natives had harnessed ten thousand years of fire wisdom and completely eliminated the menace of large wildfires. And then we killed them all and decided to do the exact opposite, and put out every spark. As the era of Indian burning disappeared and the timber industry rose to power, you began to see large devastating fires reemerge in the historical record, striking a devastating blow to the bottom line of the major timber companies, who lost millions of trees, mostly because they left so much slash in their wake, that they turned the forests into nuclear powder kegs. The logging titans, eager to maintain their wealth, pressured the US Forest Service to protect their inventory and put out every spark. It was called the 10 a.m. policy. In order to preserve the wealth and resources of America's biggest corporations, the government used taxpayer dollars to chase down every fire, no matter how remote, with the goal of having it out. of having it out by 10:00 AM the following day, dragging heavy machinery into the depths of the forest. It was a stark contrast to the traditions of our ancestors. This radically aggressive policy marked the beginning of the era of modern fire suppression. It became a war effort, and like any other government industrial complex, they leveraged fear with aggressive propaganda campaigns to manufacture public support. And today, after over a century of aggressive fire suppression, the mean fire interval has now returned to the same level of the pre-human era of nuclear mega-fires, with many areas in California having no burn history in over 100 years.
So, what is the fire debt for the Wildwood Watchers Community of Ucaipa? How long has it been since fire burned in this immediate area? According to the fire history maps that the US Forest Service retains, the last time this neighborhood area saw fire was the year 1920. That's 103 years of fire debt. This is the motivation for the organization of the Wildwood Watchers Fire Safe Council, and the reason behind the plans to reduce the fuel load in this area. Thanks for your help and support.
So like I said, one of the projects we're working on is that hazard fuel reduction, and we're kind of coming up with what that means, whether it's mechanical application or actual burning, some burning projects, stuff like that, to reduce the fuels in there to ultimately provide safety to those homes, so we don't get those mega-fires established that are very hard to put out through traditional fire response. So I'll bring Doug up here just to say brief words, and I'm very proud of what they've done, they've worked hard, this is all on them. They ask us for guidance, but they put all the work in, and this is on them, and I applaud them for it.
Thank you, thank you for having us. I would also like to say a big thank you to Kathy Barton, our Vice President. She put together a lot of the 501(c)(3) paperwork and the grant application. And a big thank you for Chief Malinowski and Councilmember Thorpe, who both showed up at our neighborhood meeting last month and presented, and I think they're on board with everything we're doing. And he's saying that we're doing it by ourselves, we're doing a lot of it by ourselves, but we need the guidance and support of the city members, and we-
...can collectively to prevent, to the greatest extents possible, fire that affects their properties. So in addition to participating in these mega projects to reduce fuel load in the areas surrounding us, it's about educating our neighbors and providing them with information so that they can take action on their own to improve their defensible space around their house, perhaps consider home hardening. And we hope through this Fire Safe Council, we can find funding sources to help residents do that. So in addition to improving the environment around us and making that more fire resilient, we're trying to take individual and neighborhood-level action to do that. Thank you.
What kind of funding would you need, or what kind of funding are you talking about for this particular project?
Our startup grant came through the California Fire Safe Council, but the actual funding source for this was Edison International, the parent company of Southern California Edison, that funded about six or seven new startup Fire Safe Councils in Southern California. And there were about an equal number of grantees in Northern California that had a different source. Those were just startup funds, really building our own capacity to be able to carry on our work. CalFire, the US Department of Agriculture, which includes the National Park Service and Forestry, also has funding sources that we might be able to tap into as we're eligible to do so. There's been, especially in the state, there has been a great deal of attention to not only fighting the wildfires that our state has experienced, especially in the last few years, but helping communities to mitigate the effects of those wildfires. So we'll be looking at all those funding sources to carry out work in the future.
Can we get our picture taken with you, so we can get you in the newspaper and get some advertising for you?
Certainly.
I know that our past Mayor Dick Riddell had a huge fondness for YAPs and supported YAPs above and beyond the call of duty, and I know the city supports that as well. But anyway, that brings us to our consent agenda. Richard Frost is our first speaker. Come on up, Richard, and tell us where you live, your name and where you live for the record, please.
Richard Frost, 1273 One Third Street, Ucaipa. I was just wondering, what are the ordinances covering skateboarders on the sidewalks? Because I know the kind, I don't know, some places they have, you can't ride them on, you know, sidewalks, and then I guess the street, you can't really do it on the street either. And I was, they can be kind of dangerous sometimes. I was working as a movie extra in Santa Monica a number of years ago, that movie, The Truth About Cats and Dogs, and a skateboarder came off the sidewalk and ran into a couple of us, you know, but you never know where they're gonna come from, so.
Thanks a lot, Richard, appreciate your comments. Next speaker is Denise Winter.
Good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity. I have some information for the council this evening as regarding Burttec waste haulers and franchise fees. I noted on the brand-new Sunshine Ordinance that you guys have placed on the website, I want to commend you for that, that the city accepts $1,538,000, give or take, in franchise fees, but I couldn't find a breakdown to tell me exactly what Burttec pays the city of Ucaipa. So that's a question I have for the council. But more importantly, is information that I have for the council that is a decision that was made by the California Supreme Court last summer, and it was titled Zolly versus the City of Oakland. And in this decision, it says in part that cities or counties may not accept franchise fees from waste haulers. And our Supreme Court Justice Liu said, quote, "It's collusion," basically, end quote. He was the one that authored that opinion. And more importantly, just to note that we all know as customers of Burttec, that any fees that they pay to the city are then passed along to the customer, the consumer, and that's we, the people. But I have a copy of that Supreme Court decision, which I would like the council to study through, and I would hope that the city would be able to figure out how to go forward in not receiving franchise fees, and maybe then Burttec wouldn't have to give us a cost increase for our waste disposal. But anyway, as Councilman Garner was quoted last week, I think it was, in the News Mirror, he said, whoops, my time's up. Anyway, he says it's a priority for City Council to help our citizens and taxpayers save money. So here you go. May I approach, or can someone bring this to you? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for your information, I appreciate that. Stephen, do we want to address that, or we want to talk about that, or just let that go?
So I would say that that case is obviously known to city staff, to people in my profession. It was a lightning bolt out of the blue for cities all across the state. I would say that the public speaker might be generalizing what the court's finding was. It's a little bit more nuanced than that, something that city staff is aware of and that we're constantly monitoring. So that would be the response I'd have today. If you want a attorney-client memo going more into depth on that, I can do that.
Okay, well, thank you for that information, and thank you for your comments, we really appreciate it. Martha Glupka.
Good evening, my name is Martha Glupka. I'd like to say I'm a very, very proud citizen of Ucaipa, but not because of why you might think. This past weekend, I was proud to have been the lead of a top team of the most extraordinary citizens in an effort to help fund the recall effort in Ucaipa by raising the necessary dollars needed to pay the legal fees being imposed on them for executing their constitutional rights in attempting to recall some members of this council. When I realized that the city I have loved for 40-plus years was suing the people they are supposed to serve and using taxpayer funds, needed to do that, instead of using the roads, a new library, and so many other important needs, rather than choosing to take hard-earned taxpayer funds from the good people of Ucaipa to block and stall what has otherwise been a right of citizens to do in the history of our country, I decided it was time to ask instead, the fine people of our community, to come forward and donate their goods and hard-earned money to help us fight back. What fight back they did. Goods were donated in such volumes that it took my team over a month of working day and night to price and arrange the best darn sale I've ever had the pleasure to do. The citizens came out by the thousands, both in donations and purchases. I quickly realizes we needed a safe venue to stage and assemble such a large function. As the event began with disco and music and fanfare, it felt more like a country fair atmosphere, with old friendships renewed and people stepping out to help in any way possible. The support and encouragement we received was nothing short of astounding, and gave us the energy and acknowledgement we needed to know that we were doing the right thing for our neighbors. We gained knowledge over the weekend from the people of Ucaipa concerning some of you sitting up there pretending of us, and the cash that was put into our hands without purchases was astounding, and I didn't even have to do a dance for their sincere generosity. You have chosen to spend senseless dollars to stop us instead of fulfilling the promises you made to the people, your choice. And as most of us see it, your fear is keeping you from fulfilling the needs of this community. Shame on you for this senseless, ego-driven nonsense. At least we have tried to negotiate and been very transparent to our fellow neighbors, unlike what we have seen from some of this council. Keep digging your hole, and we will still be here to view accountable. Stand up and be the men you said you were when you campaigned and end this nonsense. Stop telling the people you represent that you are-
Well, thank you Martha for the kind words, we really appreciate it. Kathy Sellers.
Kathy Sellers, I'm requesting that City Council come up with an ordinance addressing what I'm about to say. In May 2019, City Council adopted a code of conduct for council members. On pages 15 and 16, it states, quote, "Proper conduct is not showing antagonism or hostility, delivering or misleading, speaking recklessly or spreading rumors, stirring up bad feelings or divisiveness, acting in a self-righteous manner. Council members shall demonstrate honesty, integrity, and civility in every action and statement. The same level of respect and consideration that is deemed appropriate for public discussion should be maintained in private conversations. No personal attacks of any kind are appropriate under any circumstances," close quote. Repeatedly, Bobby Duncan shows total disdain for that code of conduct. He pressured the owner of an establishment that I was invited to speak at on August 3rd by threatening a loss of business if I wasn't silenced, that the Mill Creek Restaurant and the Redlands Tea Party are on his radar. I have a printout of the views on a social media site related to this incident. So far, there are 3,000 views and comments, not for Mr. Duncan's behavior. The tale being told that he was merely warning his friend of what might happen to his business is laughable. He told the mayor of Calamasa that he won't forget his allowance of Ucaipa Preservation Society to rent his vineyard. He's been telling people that I'm evil. I am not the leader of the recall, but just one outspoken member of over 1,000 citizens that's growing larger every day. Mr. Duncan, you will not be mandating anything to me. Apparently, there's some confusion on your part about the relationship we have. You work for me and my fellow citizens. My First Amendment right to free speech will not be violated by you. You campaigned on that very right, and you have repeatedly denied your conflict of interest with Craig Heaps, yet have stated to others that you work for him, you have shared office space, you have voted on his projects when you clearly have a financial interest in the outcome. Your recent statement that you're making as much money as you can on Ucaipa and then moving away shines a spotlight on your ultimate goal. It is not to serve this great city in the best interests of the community. Members who do not follow proper conduct as outlined in the code of conduct may be reprimanded or formally censored by the council. I call on this council to act and abide by your own code of conduct by censoring the egregious contact, conduct of Bobby Duncan. Follow through on what has been put in place and prove to the community that no one is above the bylaws of this body. How much more is he going to get away with? Is this why he wanted Ray Casey removed in embarrassment to Ucaipa's reputation and acts with impunity? Your silence and acceptance of his wrongful behavior makes you all complicit in his total disregard of the very code of conduct put in place primarily due to his past bad acts. Maybe we should call it the Bobby Duncan Code of Misconduct. Do something. Have the courage to follow through and prove to the citizens that you take these things seriously."
Thank you Kathy, appreciate the kind words. Next speaker is Cecilia Johns.
Good evening, Cecilia Johns, 33175 Colorado Street in Ucaipa. Mr. Duncan, we missed you at our mega-rummage sale over the weekend, we had some bargains. I had one set aside for you on the reduced shelf for $1.79, it's negotiable. I'm sorry you had, you had to work so hard to close us down, to put pressure on property owners, restaurant owners, business owners, to tell them not to be part of our project is pretty piss-poor, I would say. But seriously, suddenly our First Amendment principles are being threatened here. We cannot applaud, thank you for everybody who did, at council meetings, or the police department may escort us out. Well, just for the record, I've been escorted out of better places. The recall effort to remove the terrible trio has hit a speed bump since the good city decided to sue its own people. That's a bad look, guys. Who is paying recall? Oh, whoa, wait, that would be us, the residents. I'm sorry, I'm really nervous. That's bad luck, guys. And what happened with the Chamber of Commerce, the city decided to kick them out of the YPAC and also cut funding. I heard Bobby Duncan is not a fan of the Chamber. Well, that figures. That's a bad look, guys. The city finances are suddenly off. The budget, first the city says it's bad, blames the previous administration. Wait, the budget is good, we are okay, then the library needs matching funds, and suddenly we don't have money to match the funds, so we could have a library. funds so we could have a library. That's just a bad look, guys. The recall group had a very successful fundraiser this weekend. There were signs all over town that was until somebody or a group of somebodies removed some signs. Who would do such a thing? It was kind of like when a city employee was videotaped removing recall signs on private property. It's a bad look, guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Johns, we appreciate your comments and your kind words. Next speaker is Joel McCabe.
Joel McCabe, District One, thank you. I want to know why in the last couple of weeks, or the last couple of meetings, we've had closed sessions on property acquisitions. Why are we buying eighty acres on the other side of Five Winds? You have what looks to be a proposed Jefferson all the way through Casablanca to Oakland Road, maybe to accommodate the AVA and quick access to microbreweries or, excuse me, micro wineries. I don't know why we're wasting our time with that. Why don't we spend our money on a library? That's what this place needs. There's a quote, "Bad libraries build collections; good libraries build services; good libraries build communities; great libraries build communities." That's what we need. In regards to the property, Mr. Duncan, are you aware of these parcels and are cities interested in these land purchases? Are these parcels listed for sale by you? Will you be negotiating with Mr. Mann regarding the purchases? Will you be commissioned for these sales? If you do have interest, will you recuse yourself from voting on the purchases or leasing opportunity? Those are all serious questions to you as a relator. Now, in regards to the library, it's old, running out of space, it needs updating. Why don't we build the library and convert the old building into a mental health facility to help all the homeless that keep building within our town? The next thing is, the last council meeting, I requested that three councilmen come forward with the town hall for each of their districts. Mayor Beaver, you responded to me at the end of the meeting stating coming attractions. As far as the other two, I don't think you have the courage to take the tough questions, and Councilman Duncan wouldn't be able to answer Councilman Garner's. I think it's easier, Mr. Duncan, to play the bully by removing other candidates' campaign signs, or threatening businesses that don't have your sign, or a candidate pushing your agenda in their window, or maybe even personally texting Mayor Bill Davis regarding opening his facility to allow the North Mench haters to bash our city council. You insulted Mr. Davis, his friends, and also stated, "Going forward, people don't forget this type of involvement." I think that's a threat. For your information, Mr. Duncan, I rented the facility through the business office. Anyone can, for weddings, reunions, any types of events. Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis wasn't hosting it, Ucaipa Preservation Society was. That event was canceled for the extreme heat, not because you. That leads me to your great phone call from Mill Creek to censor Kathy Sellers' speech at the Tea Party meeting regarding the council and its city decisions since January ninth. You threatened him with the loss of business if he allowed her to speak. He absolutely allowed her, and everyone in that room was made aware of your attempt to censor her, and also the request for you to address the audience with the rebuttal. But you were busy. This must be how you spend fifty percent of your time.
Thank you for your comments. Just for the record, I was in Oregon taking care of my sick mother. That's able to come and rebut or do a presentation.
Do you sure have plenty of time to do the rest of it?
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. Christine Muller.
Christine Muller, Fawn Ridge Place, thank you for hearing me. Hey, you know what? There are good things going on in the Ucaipa, by the way. It's kind of hard to sit here week after week and hear all the hard stuff that's going on, but, you know, I do want to make sure that everybody knows that there's so many good things going on. I see so many of our volunteers out here that make a difference with our city. So, yeah, you know, there's some things going on, but there's also many, many, many good things. I just wanted to come up here and make sure that I made note that our Shane Masood is no longer with us. I thought he was one of the best hires that we had in a long time, and I thought he was going to be a lifer with us, and thank God, he's got a great job that he went to. But, you know, that was one of the negative facts from January, for sure, for sure. The other thing I want to say is, I know you guys had two closings about a hot potato, the eighty acres up there formerly listed by Mayor Pro temp Duncan. It's a hot potato. It came to the AVA with a three-acre metal building and yurts and all kinds of stuff, and got blown out of the water. But you need to be sensitive that the Five Winds Ranch has a MOU that was signed by the city and by the mayor at the time. That MOU is very specific on what the idea of that whole area is up there. There's concersements, the IERDC, there was grant funding for those things. It's supposed to be conserved, so while you're in negotiations for it, for whatever it is, it's supposed to be general plan, period. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Tom?
What's that?
Yeah, if I may, just one thing I feel the need to respond to, to correct the record. Shane Masood was mentioned, and Ms. Muller is correct, he was a phenomenal employee for the city. However, I think the interpretation of what happened since January is incorrect. Since January, Shane was promoted internally to a management analyst position that K increased. It was discussed with him ahead of time, he expressed pleasure and optimism with that move. There was never anything negative. And unfortunately for the city, Mr. Masood was offered and accepted a position with Southern California Edison and started, I believe it was last. So we were sad to see him go, but I think it is a phenomenal opportunity for him. We never begrudge someone an opportunity, so we saw him off as a staff, and he will be missed.
Okay, so, Mr. Wong, you're up.
Anson Wong, 3515 Court Street, Ucaipa, California. It's a horrible thing when I come up, I'm the friendly face, there must be something wrong. Anyway, a couple of things. Make a Difference Day. If you have kids, join the youth, they're making dirt bombs. Dirt bombs will help our trails in places that have empty spaces refurbish with local plants and so on, number one. Two, comment again on Mr. Venable and Christine Muller. They try and get all these committees together, work together, and what they want is to unify groups to work together for the beauty and enhancement and enrichment of the city. And I don't want to see any of that loss be these two people. Councilman Thorpe going to the meeting about wildfires, I think that's very important. And again, I don't know everything that goes on, so if the mayor pro temp, if Matt Gardner went to some meetings and is pushing enhancement of the city, then I want to thank you as well. But since I don't know, I can't say anything about it. The wildfires are a disaster in Maui, and all of our hearts go out to the loss of life, homes, and everything. Having the wildfire people or provincial wildfire people come is very important. Cal Fire is very important. But I, you know, having fire mitigation is one thing, and it's important. But because of the way our state is, because of the way our city is laid, if we don't consider the exit routes, the planning of the streets, and so on, we're going to have a disaster for our new projects. And I encourage the city planner and his staff to make sure that the exits and the width of the streets and everything that concerns about evacuation, especially if there's a lot of children or elderly, and we don't want them impacted so that they're harmed and we look back and say, "We should have this," or that, or the other thing. So please, as a city council, as a city manager, as a city planner, please take that all into consideration for all of you current and new projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong, we appreciate your comments. Amy Simmons.
Good evening, Amy Simmons, County Line Road, Ucaipa. I noticed in the last week that city staff went up to the library and removed the vines that were growing on the front of the building. This has been something that I've been talking to the city about quite a bit, because they are very old and they tend to grow out into the sidewalk and impede ingress and egress, and they hold dirt shove trash into them. So my sincerest thanks to the city for removing those. The Friends of the Library has submitted a proposal for Make a Difference Day to power wash the front of the building and to power wash the sidewalks, and to really show a little building, and maybe in hopes that the city will consider bringing up their efforts for routine to the level of other buildings throughout the city and the pride that they show in their public places. So again, thank you so much, and one final note on the summer reading program, we ended up with sixteen hundred and sixty-one participants. Now, this is mostly children, but adults are to participate too. And this shows that parents, grandparents, families value literacy information and quality of life and education. So thank you, guys, for stepping up and doing that bit of maintenance and safety. You know, it's going to be getting dark early in the fall, and people leaving the library as it gets dark. It's a safety issue having that heavy vegetation, as you know, and we appreciate the attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Simmons, we really appreciate those kind words. Kevin Miskin, he's back.
I've been out of town most of the summer, and we'll spend a lot of time out of town, but I'm here tonight having found out and been aware of this, what's happened with the recall effort as far as the lawsuit against the citizens. I was not, I did not the petition, but I'm here to speak on behalf of many of the citizens who certainly have been sued by this city. I find it absolutely unconscionable. I can't believe that this is happening in our little conservative city of Ucaipa, a law that was passed by the liberal agenda in Sacramento specifically because he was recalled, and then using that power grab to pass laws with his people so that they can continue to remain in power, and our little city's now using that. I also, as I looked at the lawsuit, was concerned when I saw that the lawsuit was brought against individuals, many of them, almost all of them seniors, and many of them on fixed incomes and in mobile home even defend themselves. I'm deeply proud of the Ucaipa citizens because there are so many citizens, wonderful neighbors, who truly understand what it means to be a good Samaritan, who have stepped up and paid the legal fees for many of these people, and they certainly plotted for that. But I'm concerned that in this, that we're seeing that in this lawsuit, that the lawsuit was brought against these people by the city, the new city clerk, Anna Salsada, who has less than six months of serving here, serving us here and doesn't live in Ucaipa, but serves us here in Ucaipa, who was appointed by Chris Mann, who was an outcome of the January ninth coup. And deeply concerned that the city is supporting, that people are actually suing themselves with their own tax dollar. So I'm here tonight to ask you to stop this charade, to stop this circus, to let the facts come out wherever they may fall, and to allow this to go forward because this is the constitutional way, and this is the way the Democratic Party works, and to allow these people to express themselves. So I'm asking the city council tonight to stop the lawsuit. I'm asking Anna Salsada to specifically rescind this. We don't need to be paying our tax dollar monies, money to law firms in Los Angeles. And so, please, let's stop this.
Go ahead and give yourselves another round of applause. That brings us to mayor and council member business. That brings us to mayor and council member business. Is there any business that you gentlemen would like to bring up?
Mr. Pro temp? The consent agenda, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I apologize. So that brings us to the consent agenda. I got caught up in all that applause, I'm sorry about that, I apologize. So that brings us to our consent agenda. Consent agenda ends at item number fifteen. Is there anything on the consent agenda that my colleagues would like to remove for discussion?
I'd like to pull fourteen for discussion.
Which one?
Fourteen.
Okay, fourteen. So Councilmember Thorpe would like to remove item number fourteen from the consent agenda for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Chris? Matt?
No.
Okay, so do I have a motion for the consent agenda less item number fourteen?
I'll move.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes four zero, or four, yeah, four zero. So that brings us to item number fourteen. Who wants to present item number four?
I can present item fourteen, Mayor Pro temp. Item fourteen is a, the city council approved contract amendment number one with Econolite Systems, who is our traffic signal maintenance and maintenance contractor. The proposed amendment is, includes some of the repairs that were requested from them outside of their regular maintenance contract and the repairs from last year. Some of them, as you recall, include the repairs to the north-south pedestrian, pedestrian system. There was some discussion at a previous city council meeting regarding the intersection at fourteen, at Fourth Street. We did add the ADA audible feature to the traffic signal at Third and Fifth, which is included in this proposed contract amendment, and also included are some repairs that were required at Frontier that damaged some underground infrastructure. Those repairs were requested to be done by the city's signal maintenance contractor due to their knowledge of the system. Since then, we have provided an invoice here for those repairs, and that invoice is being processed by Frontier. If any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Thorpe?
I've got a few for you, sir. Earlier this year, correct me if I'm not mistaken, but we had some issues with Frontier digging up different areas of the city to do work, and they were not coming back in time to do their roadwork repairs, is that correct?
That is correct.
Have those gotten resolved?
So you are correct in that they, Frontier, as part of their enhanced infrastructure work, they did trench many of our streets. They had not planned on doing asphalt repairs until after they completed the majority of that work, but we did reach out to them and ask that those repairs be completed sooner. And last, they did provide us with a repair, those asphalt streets, and they actually started doing that work last Monday, and they'll be doing it for the next few weeks.
Okay. Certain is this, is the last time they, well, they were at Fur and Bryant, when they damaged the lines up there. How did that impact our community up there? Were they out of, did it have a great impact up there, to the residents up there?
It was mostly for new infrastructure work. So it didn't, it didn't affect any of their existing customers. It did affect the city, the traffic signal for a few hours because we needed to complete those repairs, but... but that was the only impact to the community.
So I'm aware of it on occasion. I think you and I talked where they dug up a little bit of section of road on Wildwood Canyon Road and took a little bit to get that repaired. It may not be done yet. I don't know. I didn't drive up there this weekend. But my frustration is it seems like it takes Frontier a long time to come back and make the roads presentable after they've done some digging. And we don't need more potholes and bad spots in the road. Did they're processing the bill? How long have they had the bill?
They have had it for about three weeks.
Do we give them a timeframe?
We, we give them 30 days.
And if they don't pay?
And if they don't pay, we also ask them and their contractors to provide a deposit so they have the option of either take, allowing the city to take those funds from their deposit, from their encouragement permit, or they can pay it directly.
Okay. So I don't know if this, but it, it just seems like their quality of work is lacking. I'm not a construction individual. I don't work in your field that you're in. But it doesn't seem like they take it too seriously about repairing our area once they dig into our streets. I don't know how we could go about doing it, but if they don't pay on a reasonable amount, if there's a way to add interest, if there's a way to add a penalty, I think they need to take it seriously about getting back to us and repairing our roadway. I don't know about the other gentleman in their districts, but it just seems to me that they don't take it serious to put things back the way they found them. And, you know, $10,000 bill to them probably isn't much of a motivation to turn around and pay it. So I think we need to think of some way to make them get a little more on the ball.
So one thing that we have done is we've added language to their encouragement permits when they, when they pull those encouragement, and included that they specify a schedule or timeline for their, and can also, Department to determine what recourse we may have for adding a finance charge or something in addition to those invoices. This, in the last four or five years, this is the second time that we have had to invoice them for damages like that, and the first time they did pay for, for those repairs.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they're taking it seriously and they get back to us and they make their repairs. Our citizens don't need more potholes and damaged roadways to drive over, inconvenience because of their lack of planning or quality of work. So, that's all I have. We'll follow up.
So I'm, I'm sensing that there were some repairs done by this organization that didn't get done either on time or they did sloppy, fact or fiction?
The asphalt repairs were not done immediately after they had done the work in the street, and now they're coming back to, to complete those repairs.
Okay, you satisfied with that?
I am, thank you.
We have fines, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, go.
And we have fines for that, for not getting those repaired in a timely.
Our encouragement process include fines for completing, completing those repairs, but we do have the ability to withhold any future permits until those repairs are.
Did someone bring that to your attention, John?
What part?
Well, just the fact that-
I know one of my constituents brought mention, that was Doug, the gentleman of Fire Council previously, about an area at the end of his roadway that was damaged and it was taking weeks for it to get repaired. I don't know if it's been repaired yet, but reading this, having knowledge of that, and have heard some of his comments in previous city council meetings about them digging and then road repair, and continue to do more digging throughout the city, and that they had halted more per, additional permits until that was addressed. Having remembered that, seeing this on tonight, I just think it needs to be taken seriously.
Okay, thanks. Anything else on item number 14? Do I have a motion to approve item number 14?
Move it. I just want to make sure we, if they don't get back to us, I want to make sure that we do something to get them motivated.
Okay. Have a first?
I'll second it.
Have a first and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that completes the consent agenda, right? Now we're at mayor and council business. Do you guys have anything on your mind as far as mayor and council member business, even though the mayor's not here?
Well, Make a Difference Day is coming, and, and also I want to commend the night out. It was, you guys had a grunt, and it, it was a lot of fun. And then we have a lot of stuff coming to the council as far as trials and open spaces and Ucaipa Youth Advisory. So I'm pretty excited about that. You know, Megan, Megan and Sarah's done amazing jobs. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate that. How about you, sir?
Okay.
Okay, I don't have anything. So, then that to possible action on pending legislation. And I believe that brings Mr. Joe Perdetto to the podium.
Mayor Protem and Honorable Council. Before you is an item to oppose AB 309. The state legislature is considering two bills that threaten to undermine the city's land use authority. The first bill is SB 423, which you voted to oppose back in April. This bill is another bill that would the state general services department to build state-owned high-density housing on state-controlled property, whether they owned or leased property, without considering local land use zoning or design standards. The Califor of Cities has encouraged all of its members to take urgent action to oppose this item, and this will be the second bill that is before you to further legislation to undermine the city's zoning and design standards. Questions? I'm happy to answer.
Any questions, gentlemen? I have a question. So, in this case of AB 309, this is only concerning state-owned property. This is, is this actually the zoning jurisdiction of the local city?
No. It will only allow the state to construct pro, state-controlled property.
Okay.
Therefore bypassing our zoning and design standards.
Will it do any good to oppose it? Okay, I'm just kidding about that, by the way. Okay, so do you want to approve this, gentlemen?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second to, to oppose SAB 9. Have a first and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Go ahead.
I believe we may have had one public comment card on this item.
Oh. See, this is being the chair. Okay, I apologize to Donna Snodgrass. Can we reverse that before we vote? Since she didn't have a, what's that?
Don't reverse it.
Apologize, Donna. My, my bad.
Good evening, Donna Snodgrass, Walnut Grove Court. Before I forget, you do have state-owned property in Ucaipa, a fire station on Bryant Street. We used to be Ucaipa Fire Station, Station 13. Now, what is it, 551, I think? So if the state ever decided to move out of that station for some reason, state-owned property right there in the building, that this could, this, it could happen here in the city.
Well, you had to bring us down like that, didn't you?
You didn't know that. You didn't realize that, did you? That's a state station. Giving this to the Department of General Services, I mean, really, the letters are good. I just want to tell you why. You, you did a good thing. The Department General Services was created, I think, to screw it that came to them because I haven't been involved in a project and I had extensive experience with that department before I retired. General Services is a non-funded state agency. They exist by charging other state agencies to manage projects, and the state and every other agency to use General Services, from initial planning to architectural drawings through, through to construction. I was working on a project in 1994. It landed on my desk in 1994, and it was a huge project. We were moving the entire Southern California Regional Fire Coordination Center from the city of Riverside out to March Air Force Base. And in the work that I was doing on the drawing input, that started in 1994, when I retired in 2010. It was still in the planning stages. And we met every single month and so at General Services headquarters on that project. That's how bad it is. I don't know if you're familiar with your trips to Sacramento Capitol Mall, right into the state Capitol building. The unemployment EDD headquarters building was just vacated to a new building that is ultimately being converted to housing right there on Capitol Mall by, and it's in a, a building that probably stemmed. That's how, that's how nuts General Services is. This whole bill has got disaster risk. There's not much we can do except oppose it in the most strongly worded letter that you can come up, come up with. Like you said, it's state property, state surplus property. But keep in mind, there's at least one parcel and one building in Ucaipa that could be surplus property if they decide to close that station because the state responsibility area is either decreed, building's too old, they have to move. You never know what the state is going to do. And I would, I would fight to keep that station, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Appreciate your comments. Oh, that brings us to item number 17, which is Healthy Ucaipa Run, serious wrap-up. I have one speaker. I want to get that out there so I don't forget. One speaker, Mr. Wong.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. At this time, I'd like to invite the Healthy Ucaipa Committee up to this. As they make their way up, I just want to remind everyone that the Healthy Ucaipa Committee is made up of seven-member unity who work towards making Ucaipa a healthy place to live, work, and play. I am the staff liaison for this committee and am honored to give this mission this evening. On November 24th, this committee held their first annual Turkey Trot, and on April 8th, 23, the committee held their first annual Bunny Hop. Bunny Hop is not to be confused with what you might do in middle school, but it is actually a 5K and 1-mile run or walk, both with a friend or an animal. These runs were held at the Ucaipa Park. The Turkey Trot Race Course was drawn and drafted the cross-country team at Ucaipa High School, and the Bunny Hop Course was drafted by the Ucaipa Hills Community College Cross Country Coaching Staff. Say that 10 times fast. The Turkey Trot had a total of 255 participants and earned $6,970, and the had a total of 275 participants and earned $7,005. All the committee's expectations for attendance and fun were met, and people can't wait for the next run. The fiscal impact was that there was an allocation of a net cost of $10,000 for this event. The actual net cost was $1,572. If I may bring your attention to the screen, there's a few photos This concludes my wrap-up report, and the committee or myself can answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions, comments? I, I didn't get a chance to attend either one of those, and I applaud that, but it was a fantastic event, and I thank you all for that, for sure.
Yeah, great job. You guys have been doing major impact to the city, and I'm proud of every one of you.[1453.53][1453.53](APPLAUSE) Can we go up there and take a picture?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and that was a whole, that video was a whole lot more pleasant public comment.
While they're, kept their picture, we expect them all to be on the next run.
Did you, did you still want to speak after you're taken?
Yes.
Let's get our picture taken, and then we'll go ahead and let Mr. Wong do his.
Good job!
Now that they're seated, Hanson Wong, 3515 Court Street, California. So, this committee does a great job. Even the newest committee, she came and got to work and helped out on the, I want to promote this new project shortly because you'll be hearing about it, but it's a respite for the people of Ucaipa to help find food or thing, or other services, mental health services and so on. So, and working with the team on it. And you'll hear more about it later, but please support this particular. It is very important for the mental, physical health. Hopefully it'll help with us as well. But again, we can't get anything unless we try. So I think that's important. As far as the runs are concerned, they mentioned animals and so on. The, the strollers, were they amazing? They had their kids, and they were going, even Mr. Mann. So, I expect you to trail behind him because he really can move on you when he wants to. So, it, all of those things, for a healthy Ucaipa. I'm sorry that Jeff Distelberg couldn't be here tonight. He was caught behind an auto accident on the freeway. Would have expressed his feelings for this particular group in a great way. As far as committees are concerned, I want to bring up one other thing. I apologize to Mayor Protem. He did attend a meeting with the mobile home people along with Mr., and they had a lot of concerns, not just Brent, but about the way they were treated. And I think it's important to become fairly soon with an ad hoc committee or a committee of some kind to help the people in the most. So I would highly encourage you to think about it and have something done. I'm sure Mr. Mann will have something presented to help them out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong.[1665.53][1665.53](APPLAUSE) Okay, that was 17. So that brings us to item number eight. And so Mr. Thorpe, Congressman Thorpe, needs to recuse himself?
Due to my nature of my employment.
I remembered that, but I didn't. You're up.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council. I'm here to talk to you tonight about an additional school resource officer to our school in Ucaipa. Currently right now, we have 14 schools in the city of Ucaipa, about 10,000 students. Really, it's absolute innocence. We only have one SRO to protect 14 schools and 10 students. The school resource officers assist the district in maintaining environment and developing a positive relationship between students and law enforcement. Currently, right now, the city shares the cost of our current SRO, SRO, with the school district in a 50-50 exchange. We cover 50%, they cover 10% in exchange for the use of their facilities, their gymnasiums, their things, et cetera. As you all know, we have an amazing superintendent of our district, and with a little gentle nudging of some of our school boards, some of whom are in attendance today, the school district recently approached the city desiring to act for an additional SRO. The cost of a funded SRO, which includes a patrol car, radios, salary, workers' compensation, insurance, and a lot of other things, is about $85,000. In this proposed agreement, the city would pay for the administrative costs of that secondary SRO, which is $61,600. The school district would cover the remaining amount, which is $124,260. thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Staff is requesting that council authorize the city manager to execute this agreement between the city, the Ucaipa Calamity Unified School District, and amend our Schedule A with the Sheriff's Department in the amount of one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. I'm available for any questions.
So the SRO deputy, they work at the high school or they work at the junior high or they go back and forth? How does that work?
From what I understand, they try to focus the majority of their efforts at the, however, they're shared between the high school and all the other schools. There are calls for service at the other schools, they have to leave the high school and go handle those calls for service. In addition to, they're trying to do outreach with the other schools, right? So that takes away their time from being at the high school or the middle schools, where really they're needed most.
Any questions?
No, I just have a comment, I think that's a great idea.
I just realized how old I was when the SRO said, "Coach." And I realized, oh, man.
Was that Rico or Perez?
Perez.
Okay.
Yeah, he was one of my, I coached him in baseball, I think he was like twelve. So that's kind of tough, but I'm a hundred percent for this.
Awesome.
Appreciate you coming and bringing this, Bob. Thank you. I love getting the community together on stuff like that, what my, my goal is.
I'm set for as many cops as we can get.
Absolutely.
So, any further questions?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
First and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, go ahead and get Mr. Thorpe back in here now.
Thank you, sir.
That brings us to number nineteen, Captain Walker.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. Here tonight to pursue your twenty-twenty-two Ucaipa Police Department Annual Report. Here we go. As we get started tonight, I just want to tell you, first of all, you may be wondering why you're getting an annual report for twenty-twenty in mid-August. Well, that's a couple of reasons. The biggest reason, our network disruption that we experienced earlier this year, it really hindered our abilities, most of our records and our statistical data that I would be providing to you. After a lot of work with our folks at our headquarters and a lot of creative investigating on our end, we're due the information, we realize that it's very important to provide accuracy to the council and to the residents of Ucaipa. But I just wanted to give this disclaimer that as we come back online, there may be some small variances in the numbers that I'm presenting you tonight. I don't anticipate major variances, but I just wanted you to know, due to this network disruption that we experienced in April, it really prevented going back all the way to two thousand nineteen to access our reports and a lot of the areas where we get statistical data. So as you know, here in the city, we have a total of forty-seven personnel that are assigned to the city. We have nine professional staff, that's our clerical, our automotive, our automotive person, Doug, and then our sheriff's service specialists. We have seven deputies who are assigned here to the city, hopefully after tonight, that'll go to twenty-eight for future here, three detectives, six sergeants, and then of course, Lieutenant Scoville. We also handle the county area zone, then that's an additional six deputy shows for that area. So a total of fifty-three personnel out of our station. We also, County Department of Behavioral Health employee, advocate, and two of our local city staff, Trevor Benson, Melissa Lee, out of this. So getting right into it, in twenty-twenty, for the city of Ucaipa, deputies, forty-two thousand two hundred and thirty calls for service, thirty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-one of those were dispatch calls for service, resident of the city or caller called our center and requested a deputy sheriff. Ten thousand forty-nine of those calls were self-initiated, that could anything from a traffic stop to someone on the braving us down and a deputy self-initiates that with a member of the community. The deputy, four thousand two hundred and sixty-four reports for an average of about fifty-seven per deputy assigned to the city, and a total of eight hundred and eighty-nine adult bookings at Sheriff's Department Correctional Facilities. As we look at, provide the council with the three-year snapshot to just kind of give you of how things are trending as we look at statistical data and you'll see that our call risks are going up, going back twenty-twenty, forty-one thousand, almost forty-two thousand, little over forty-two thousand in twenty-twenty-one, forty-two, two-thirty number in two. You'll also notice our reports have gone up and our bookings at the jail facility have gone up over the last three years. Calls for service-wise, go back a little bit further, I said about a ten-year snapshot of just a little bit view, a little more of a thirty-thousand-foot view and you'll note that when you look at that data, is that our calls for service are steadily going, but you'll notice that as those proactive calls go up, the rate at which the dispatch calls for service starts to lower. So essentially, the more proactivity sheriffs have out there on the street, the less our residents are willing to report the crimes or report the services. In twenty-twenty-two, generally, for those of you who've been through these meetings or rotations before, we usually present on part one crime and part two crime data. Because of the notion, I'm not going to have any part two crime data for you here tonight, so we have to focus basically on just the twenty, part one crime data and that's broken up into two categories, it's crimes against persons and crimes against property. So first for you to look at tonight for twenty-twenty-two, it's part one crimes against persons. You'll see that we had one homicide, thirteen reported rapes, twenty-one reported robberies, and fifty-five reported aggravated assaults. For reference and knowledge, the part one crimes are collectively known as indimes and then that name's used because the crimes are con serious, they tend to be reported more reliably than others and the reports are often taken directly by law enforcement and not separate agencies, which aggregate and does not necessarily contribute to the uniform Aggravated assault, so you know, it's, the definition in the law is an unlawful attack for the per inflicting severe or aggravated bodily injury, usually accompanied by a use of a weapon, means likely to cause great bodily injury or death. So for those part one crimes against property, we had a hundred and fifty-four burglaries, thirteen motor vehicle thefts, forty-four, forty-seven larcenies, and seven reported arsons. Again, to give the council reference, three-year snapshot, you'll see, first, I just want to direct into the twenty-twenty-two data, we do not have any simple data, that would have been the crime data, we didn't have that, again, because of our network and our ability to report that. You'll see, we have the same amount of homicides as last year. We had one less rape. Our worries went up by a few and then our assaults also were up from the year of twenty-twenty-one. Crimes against property, you'll also note increases here specifically for, it was quite a jump in both larcenies and burglaries from twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two. Here at the station, we have a two-man traffic unit, our traffic unit issued four thousand eighty-nine traffic citations, they handled a hundred and twenty traffic collision investigations, six DUI arrests, one unlicensed driver citation or arrest, and a hundred and twenty-nine towed vehicles. They also coordinated and participated in Office of Traffic Safety DUI operations, DUI checkpoints, and other safety options such as clicker or ticket. Just want to point out that the six DUI arrests, that seems quite, that is in part because that doesn't take into it the DUIs that were, the DUIs that happened during one of those saturation events or DUI checks, simply just their normal patrol operation day and right now, we look at the data, we look at collisions are happening and when our traffic deputies can be most effective and right now, we have them working day shift during the week, so there's not a whole lot of DUIs during time, but that's when they're needed the most because we have either, you know, reported traffic collisions or reports of reckless driving, things like that, there's the most amount of people out on the most effective during those times of the day. Again, that three-year snapshot, if you look back, going back to twenty-twenty, there was only seven hundred, seven hundred and eighteen traffic citations written that year. It jumped a bit in twenty-twenty-one. Of note, in twenty-twenty, the city council approved a second traffic unit that year and then in twenty-twenty-two, quite a significant jump over twenty-twenty. In twenty-twenty-two, we had some internal personal issues, injuries and things of that nature, so that's not even two fully-staffed deputies working during that time and they still were able to number during that time. We have since fixed that, we now are staffing two traffic cars full and we don't have that issue anymore. Traffic collisions, as a station, we worked two hundred and fifty-two traffic collisions in twenty-twenty-two. Now, that isn't just our two traffic unit, the station as a whole, so when the traffic units aren't working, the regular patrol guy gets a traffic collision. What you see there, that two hundred and two number, that doesn't include when it's getting a minor traffic collision and they just exchanging on their own and they go about their business and they're not reported, doesn't take that into account or into account late-reported accidents. So maybe there was an accident, they had an appointment they needed to be at the station later and reported the accident at a later time, so that into account either. So in twenty-twenty, we had three hundred and nineteen traffic estimations, twenty-twenty to twenty-two, we lowered it down to two hundred and fifty-two, trending in the right direction for us and I think that's a lot to do with that second traffic unit that in May of twenty-twenty-one. You'll see there, it's broken up into the three categories, damage or non-injury traffic collisions, which is the value of the collisions that we have here, then we have some category for some type of injury, traffic collision, and then fatal traffic collisions. And it's a little bit lower in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, but three is too many, if you ask me, so a lot of work to still do out there on our, on our list. At the station, we also have quality of life deputies, as you know, I'm sure you've heard them and what they do. Some of these stats had to be taken from our mid-year report from twenty-twenty-two because, again, we don't have the ability to go back and look at some of these calls and activity levels for the deputy at time due to that network disruption. As you know, our quality of life deputies, sole responsibility is to tackle life issues like this and some of those things. Their job is to focus on businesses, talking to residents, seeing what those quality life issues are and then working resolutions and solving some of those problems that are created Our quality of life deputies also work regularly with our behavioral health clinician that we have within the station to provide resources to our unharolation here in the city and as people who are in from mental health crisis as well. At the station, we also have the multiple team or our MET team, which is a two-man team. They're a targeted team that is dedicated to working on and solving high crime issues such as firearms, illegal narcotics sales and nature. As I spoke a few meetings ago about, they were responsible for the search warrant with fireworks of Fourth of July where they recovered a firearm, things like that, they really focus on major investments. As you can see here, a lot of calls for service, they take a lot of reports, they make a lot of, and they do really do some great work. Just as an example, the example on the PowerPoint slide is that they did some electrical breaker theft, which equated at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Seven search warrants, they made three arrests, there were a couple of stolen breakers and about nineteen thousand in additional stolen property. Their ability to do those major investigations really frees up sheriffs on patrol to respond to our residents that are calling in their time of need, so they're a very important aspect of what we nation. We have an adult protective services deputy and a child, we call APS CPS, protective services and children and family service. She's also very busy, so this deputy, Deputy Meyer, handles all of the APS referrals that come into the station, APS or CPS. She handles investigations. Again, this, this position was designed to free up those deputies on patrol to those emergency calls for service so they're not tied up on these other calls, which can be very time-intensive. So she handles all those and she's basically detective, she works out of our detective bureau, she has a lot of extensive in dealing with children and she's a really valuable asset to us. If have this position, it would be very hard for us to keep up with the workload that we get as a result of those CPS follow-ups. As Benson talked about a little earlier, we have our school resource officer, you know, again, instrumental of a lot of schools in the town, we have a lot of students in the town, is a very, very hard-working end of, again, it takes the right type of person to be an SRO, it really does, it takes a very special person to bond with the children, work well with the staff, bounce from school to school, all the different age groups and the road does a great job, but I'm happy to hear that we potentially get in a second one because they're just really there. I don't have any gold data for that SRO position tonight, again, I sound like a broken record, but that network disruption was really put a damper in my ability to pull those, those numbers for you tonight. This one is near and dear to my heart, this one is pretty, our volunteer network and the service that our volunteers provide to the city every year is nothing amazing. Our volunteers, right around twenty-three, citizen patrol, five explorers, you see usually on a, for the pledge of allegiance, twelve posse members, we have a thirty-nine-person search and rescue unit, which I believe is the first or second biggest in the, and then we have a chaplain corps of people. In total, in twenty-twenty-two, volunteers donated over twenty-five thousand of their time, twenty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-one hours to be, that's almost three years of service in one year, voluntary donated time to the city. And truly, there is no way what we do without these folks. You know, you'll see them, they'll help us with traffic control out on the roads, they'll come to events all night out, they, if you go to the station through Friday, you'll see one of our COPs at the front counter, they really take it like it's a full-time job and these are all folks who just do it out of the goodness and a love for this city and a love for our department. So truly, I can't say enough about them, they're amazing. Throughout the year, as you know, we participate in several communities. Here, we regularly play the little league game at the Little League Field, which is amazing for us. amazing for us. Uh, we do a bike rodeo ever, um, where we set up a little, a little for them to ride on. We have CHP out there, helmets, we usually raffle off a bike, um, a really community bonding event for us, a, a way for us to get out and, uh, interact with the community in a way, and not in a way. It's, it's really a good time. Councilwoman Venable talked about National Night Out a little bit, always a very successful event here in Ucaipa. Um, while it wasn't 2022, this, uh, this August, this was my first participation in Ucaipa. I've always been a part of another since this time. So, to see it firsthand and see how, just how big it is and the amount goes into it, it was great. We had a huge turnout, it was a lot of fun, fun getting to interact with the community. Um, again, you saw all the, all the resources, I have team, our bomb and arson division, Aussie, you know, you name it, they were out there, and everybody enjoys it and, and likes to get out for that. Another big event that we're here is our, is our open house, and we do this at least once or twice a year. Again, it's an opportunity for us to invite the public to go full station here, uh, let them get to see the patrol cars, get to see the inside of the station, and just have that positive interaction with us as, as enforcement providers for the city here. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Counsel has any?
Questions?
Yes, kind of you actually. National Night Out was awesome. That was a good time.
Yes, sir.
It was, guys there. Um, the crime property, looks like it went up. What are we going to be doing to get that number down? And, um, do you need more officers?
So, two parts to the question, and I'll second part, and that is, I know, it's more, some, some more officer deputies. Um, I will, that, uh, I think when things are good, adequately staffed, and, you know, things are trending different. We all, we also live here, we see things are starting to change slime around here, and we start to see flux of people from out of the area, see, and we deal with or hear of some crime legislation that's coming through from Sacramento. Um, so all hurdles for us, a- as we, we try to enforce these things, um, I can, I think we helped up our, our enforcement since I've been here. I think we can continue to do that.
I've noticed that.
The station, in my short time, one, it was a lot busier than I thought as an outsider, just to be, you know, sure. Uh, but I think, Lieutenant, uh, we have high expectations of our folks. We expect them to be out there and getting after it. They respond well. We have a good group of young depth out there who want to work and that, you know, it, but geographically, it, it's for, for three or four deputy sheriffs on patrol at one. You figure, if you have one, if you call at the bottom of the boulevard and something happens up, say by, you know, it takes a minute to get there. So, to be able to, you know, keep ourselves through the city is challenging, because as we know, that, you know, the hub of our city i- is right here on Ucaipa Boulevard. That's where a lot of things have, a lot of our tension, our tensions start to move to those areas. Um, we have ability to back each other up on, you know, in progress. So, you know, we tend to kind of gravitate to the same areas. We have other areas vulnerable. So, if more personnel, maybe we could tackle that in different, but I, I don't think that that's, you know, the one-size-fits-all answer either.
Quality-of-life deputy, um, is this person going to be on strictly one shift? Or rotate shifts, like there's a night shift, a day shift, because they come out at night, it's pretty bad, especially Spanx, Walgreens, it's pretty.
Yeah. So, I, I, right now, two, we have two quality-of-life deputies. Now, they're splitting, they're splitting them that we have coverage every day. Right now, because of, many are out during the day, they're working more of a date, um, watch. We can certainly look at adjusting that. You know, they're very flexible and, and at different times, but we just see the most amount of people that they would want to contact during daytime hours. Um, not, not dispute your claim that there's a lot out at night either. Um, they, our graveyard patrol, usually because our call, calls for service tend to drop off, you know, not, they're definitely not as busy at night as we are during the day.
Are they working weekends?
Yes.
I'm done with questions.
I've noticed that are, a lot of our officers are from, right?
Yes, we do have quite a few.
And I think that's a fantastic, because they tend to, you know, sing snaldine songs, you know? So, um, I think it's fantastic. You guys, I see you guys out throughout, everywhere and stuff, and, and especially coming to, uh, you know, meetings and, uh, get more involved. So, I really appreciate you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Captain, just make sure you pass on to the team that were supportive of, of all of them and thankful for the job they're doing, and a great job. Um, City Mayor, a way that we could work with the captain, try to find a way, have a day to honor the volunteers from the Sheriff's Department. Um, I know the reported, the numbers that we'd have there and they work, it's impressive looking at it on paper, but until you work with them and see how much that, it really becomes to forefront of your mind, how much work they actually do for our, for our city. And I think it would be, should probably find a way to thank them for their involvement here. Um, I was a coordinator for a couple of different of the volunteers at the station here, a couple of different times, and they're off your, off their back for anybody, all of them. So, find a way to have a barbecue, appreciation day, something in their honor.
Absolutely, we can work on that. Also, um, have our, uh, annual state of the city event coming at the Y-PAC on the nineteenth of October, and as part of that event, then to honor the, uh, Volunteer of the Year in our police state. We're looking forward to that.
We certainly appreciate your work.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate all that you do, just the volunteers, but also the staff. One thing that will never happen in Ucaipa, I'm working in Ucaipa, is refund the police. We, uh, appreciate the enforcement, we appreciate, uh, you protecting us, and, uh, and we really, really, uh, honored to have you as part of our team.
Thank you.
Brings us to announcements. Any announcements? Yes, sir. Any announcements?
Uh, the day, it's just gone. It's, um, appreciation there with the, make it, that's what it is. Thank you. What day? I'm sorry? October twenty-eighth. So, if we can get everybody involved, uh, Mr. Miller, maybe the school district and people can get involved, that'd be Austin C. I see you guys at, uh, National Night Out. It was wonderful talking. Kelly's a great lady, and you guys do a great.
I failed to mention, uh, Miller, sitting next to his very talented son, and we appreciate you here tonight, appreciate the school district's help on the school resource officer. Want to, want to remember, uh, Autumn Fest is coming in October or November?
September, twenty-ninth.
Sept- oh, boy, good. October, we have, uh, the Five Winds Museum in October thirteenth. Lots of things happening in Ucaipa. Um, I'd like to, for a moment of silence, uh, in, recognizing the souls that were lost in Maui. That was certainly a disaster of length proportion, and, uh, I'd just like to close this after a moment of silence in honor of those. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.